The June 6, 2024 meeting of the Dublin City Council is hereby called to order. I'd like to ask our youth council director, Antoine Lloyd, to provide the invocation. Please remain standing after the invocation for the pledge to the flag. Mr. Lloyd?
Let us pray. Father, we give you glory and honor for this day you've given us. Thank you for an opportunity to come together as a city. We ask your blessings upon our leaders, Lord, as they lead us and guide us, that you will give them the knowledge and the understanding to lead us in the direction that is pleasing to your sight. Once again, we thank you for this day. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I want to welcome everyone to tonight's city council meeting. We have a full council, uh, we have a full council chambers and lots of folks here because we have some special presentations. We are going to begin the evening before we get to our regular agenda items. First, with the presentation of our Employee of the Year, Marissa Moon. At this point, I'd ask for our city manager, Josh Powell, to give us some background information.
If we could ask Ms. Moon to step down front, please. She is always fighting to be in the spotlight. You have to just really, as you can tell, she's stood out in the hall as long as she possibly could to avoid, avoid even coming in here. Marissa Moon is the Employee of the Year for 2023. Marissa started with the city of Dublin many moons ago. That was a joke there. In the year 2000, as, as a police clerk in the police department, she was later promoted to Assistant Court Clerk, and then she currently is the Chief Municipal Court Clerk for our municipal court. She's a very caring and hardworking person. She is not one to say, "That's not my job." Anyone who encounters her, whether a public, whether the public or a coworker, knows she's always the first one to offer help. Even if she is not at work, you can call her and she'll do her best to help you or point you in the right direction. She's given her free time willingly to help with many city events. She's helped organize parade floats, decorate for various holidays, plan events, clean spaces, and paint offices. Those that know her know that she is there by your side from start to finish. Marissa is very deserving of this award, so congratulations, Marissa Moon. She also loves hugs, so if everybody could stop her on the way out.
All right, congratulations, Marissa. Very well deserved. Glad that you were able to receive this honor tonight. Thank you for all you do for the city. At this time, we'll move to our second special presentation of the, of the evening, which is from the City of Dublin's International Committee. This committee has been chaired by council member Sarah Colby. So I'll turn it over to Councilman Colby at this time to take it away.
Can I do it just for me?
Absolutely. Whatever you want to do.
So we did a recent trip to Osaka, Japan, as part of the 26 years of our city's sister city relationship with Osaka, Japan. I'm excited to share some photos with you from the trip, but first, my husband Kurt Colby, who went as a chaperone, is going to introduce our special guest tonight.
Thank you, Sarah. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening.
Good evening.
I was so honored to, to be able to, to volunteer to go on this trip with our exchange, Students for Exchange Program to Osaka City. We could not have done this trip at all without our good friend, Shudo-san. He, listen, he gave up 10 days of his life to drag us around all these places in Japan. He arranged flights, transportation, he did everything for us. The silly questions that we had, he helped us understand what foods we might enjoy and those we might not enjoy, but he, in major sacrifice. Currently, he works in Atlanta with YKK AP as their legal counsel, and is just a great liaison for the Student Exchange Program. So we appreciate him very much. Thanks, Shudo-san.
So we're excited to have Shudo with us from Atlanta. He works in Atlanta, has been in Atlanta about two years now?
Two years.
Three years, okay. And so we're excited to have him back in Dublin with us. So we're going to go through a few of the pictures, and then we're going to allow our students to give, um, share a little bit about their, their trips. They're already going to go through these. So the purpose of our Student Exchange Program was established 26 years ago as a way for YKK to connect Osaka, Japan, which has the largest manufacturing facility of extruded aluminum windows and doors in Japan, to YKK AP in Dublin, Georgia, which is the largest U.S. manufacturing facility that we have for the, for extruded windows and doors by YKK AP. So our goal here is to establish that cultural exchange with our students. Again, here's the numbers of students and some pictures of some of the prior trips. A little comparison between Osaka and Dublin, you'll notice that Osaka City has quite a bit more in population, although their population is a little bit less dense actually than ours. It was actually five cities that came together and consolidated into one city. So our sister city used to be Sembongi, and Sembongi was one of those cities that was consolidated into the larger city of Osaka. You can see, you see Shito was, Ito is the mayor there, and we were able to meet with him and meet with some of the members of council. Their council has 30 members, and so they meet in kind of a parliamentary style. So really interesting votes. They have a city tree, a city flower, and a city mascot. The Padasaki, which is this goose here on my, on my scarf, is their city mascot. So Mayor, I am asking you to think about, maybe we need a city tree, a city flower, and a city mascot. So it was almost 7,000 mile trip, and it was about 30 hours of travel. Our students stayed up all night the night before to get prepared for this trip and deal with the jet lag. We arrived late, and of course, the first thing they wanted to do was go to 7-Eleven. The next day, we were able to visit Tokyo's YKK facility, which is their main office space, and we toured there. We also made really cool pouches with the YKK zippers. The next day, we took a bullet train to Osaka, and at that point, we were able to exchange our gifts with the mayor there, and we met our host families at City Hall and had a wonderful welcome celebration. So here's a picture of all the different city officials and host families that attended. Mr. Ito is just to the left of Mayor Ito. So Mayor Ito is in the green, holding the American flag there. And Mr. Ito, who has been to Dublin nine times, is here on the left, and he is the Chair of the International Committee for Osaka, which is my home position. So, so, so excited to see Mr. Ito again, since it's been a couple of years. So here's some pictures from the brand-new City Hall and the city council chambers, which were brand-new, really beautiful. And of course, each host family and the students had to take pictures with the Padasaki, the city mascot. So the next day, we were able to tour the elementary, the junior high, and after-school program, and visit the YKK AP plant there in Osaka. We weren't able to show you many pictures from the children's visits because they're not, their pictures are not allowed to be shown. So I was able to find some of these great pictures with pictures where their faces are not shown, so you can see. We were able to share songs together, we played lots of games, and I would say that that was definitely one of the highlights of the trip for me. So here are some pictures from the junior high, and here's the after-school program that we participated in, and the YKK plant there in Osaka. So we were able to visit a local park, and the cherry blossoms, as Mr. Ito said, waited on us. So in Tokyo, all the cherry blossoms had already fallen, and so it was really cool to see. We were a little bit north, about two hours by bullet train, north of Tokyo, so we got to see some beautiful cherry blossoms and see one of the local temples. The next day, we went to another park, and we also visited some of the tsunami exhibits. The tsunami exhibits were from a tsunami who came into the Miyagi prefecture and killed over 20,000 local residents. So if you think about that, that's like wiping out more than the entire city of Dublin. So it was very impactful to them. That happened a little more than 10 years ago, and we were able to actually present the city of Osaka, some origami cranes last year in commemoration of all those lives lost. The next day, we went to the Yubicon, which is a samurai training facility. We put our hands and feet in the local hot springs, and we made our own Kokeshi dolls, which is one of the local toys that are very popular there. The next day, they took us about two hours to the coast, to the Matsushimi Pine Islands, and we were able to do a boat tour there. And then we also were able to see one of the temples. They took us to a very fancy four-course meal overlooking the islands. You can see that, and we got to eat some very interesting foods, including some whole raw squid. And so on that Saturday, we had a wonderful free day with hosts. Some students went to aquariums, other students went to other different parks. My husband's up there in the top right at one of the local fish markets. So lots of people did different things, and then we gathered back together that evening for a farewell party. And that is our sayonara farewell party. Lots of tears were shed that night as host families shared their experiences, and students were able to tell their host families goodbye. But the next morning, Robert, we were actually able to take the train back to Tokyo, and we had a fun night there. We were able to do karaoke and see some of the sights, including the skytree there. So I just want to give a big thank you to the city of Dublin. Each student has a very short topic that they want to discuss, so I'm going to allow them to talk. They're going to say their name, their grade, and the school that they attend, or you could say your upcoming grade, right? And, and, and share the topic that you're going to do. So, y'all, go ahead. Kate?
I don't know if I'm supposed to talk to y'all or this way, but, hey, y'all, my name's Kate Colby. I'm a just graduating senior from Dublin High School. So while we're in Japan, oh, I'm going to be talking about the school systems. So while we're in Japan, we've visited a junior high school and two elementary schools. To set a picture in your mind, the schools are very open, have lots of windows, which are usually left open during the school day. So whenever we were walking by, we could hear them playing piano out the window, or not outside, but we could hear the piano from outside. The kids play a huge role in keeping the schools clean and just participating in everything inside the school, from cooking, cleaning, everything with their classrooms, whereas here, we have like adults to do that, the students do the majority of it. So they start teaching kids at a very young age independence, respect, and communication. So they do a lot of team, team-building activities and a lot of group projects. The children have a set routine where they take off their shoes in the morning, and then they put on slippers just so that everything stays clean and uniform. And then whenever they get to middle school, they start wearing uniforms. The children have multiple designated recess periods where they play games, art, music, and then one thing that I always thought that was really interesting about the playgrounds outside is they have swimming pools. So it teaches kids like how to swim while they're in school and safety about water. Although Japan is a high-tech country, they do everything very old-school. So, and it proves to work because their education system is very highly ranked globally. They don't use computers or iPads to do any of their homework. They use chalkboards, chalk, paper, pencils, and then while we were there, we actually got to participate in a lot of games with them for learning. So we did charades and, to teach them English, and it had like pictures on it, and then we would swap out and play games like that. So there's like zero computers or anything inside the schools at all. So they're, um, the kids mainly, what I thought was just really interesting is that they're taught a lot of independence. From the kindergartners that we got to go see, they would take out their toys from the bookshelf, put them back exactly whenever they told, like very, very respectful and organized, and I thought it was very, very cool. The elementary school was probably my favorite thing. And they're separated by hats colors. So whenever they let all the kids out for recess, their different hat colors are from their grade so that they can easily be told, like told apart, but it was really, really cool, and I thank you guys for the opportunity to be able to go.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Emma Claire McDaniel, and I'm a rising 11th grader at Dublin High School, and I'm going to be speaking about the language barrier. So during our trip in Japan, our group learned many things about Japan and its culture. We met some amazing people, tried amazing food, and had the trip of a lifetime. But we definitely faced a challenge in the language barrier. English and Japan are very different languages, and we experienced that firsthand. And while the language barrier was a struggle, we had so many resources to help us overcome it. First off, we practiced a lot. I remember the night before our trip, we sat down and wrote our introductions out, ready for the day that we got there, and we were ready to present them. We also had a wonderful translator, Ms. Sally, who helped us in any way she could. She always was there to explain things to us if we needed a little bit more guidance. And we used Google Translate a lot. I know personally, I use Google Translate very much. As someone who speaks little Japanese, and my family spoke very little English, it came in handy. We also learned to like use nonverbal communication, like pointing, or charades, or fun things like that, where you don't have to speak to understand what the other person's saying. And it was very eye-opening to learn that you don't need to speak the same language to have something in common with them. We learned so many things about their culture, even not understanding what they're saying most of the time. Both a southern accent and a Japanese accent are both very thick, so it was interesting, to say the least. I'm so thankful that I had the experience to go, and was so worried about the language barrier at first, but am so glad that that didn't hold me back from going. Thank you.
Hey, guys, my name is Elle Walker, and I'm a rising senior at West Lawrence High School. First of all, I would like to thank the International Committee and Dublin City, and of course, my parents for making this trip possible. I'm going to be telling y'all about the food that we had in Japan. Japanese food is known for its fresh, high-quality ingredients and its beautiful presentation. Some popular traditional dishes in Japan include sashimi, ramen, tempura, and miso soup, and we tried all of it. Japanese cuisine also incorporates a lot of seafood, rice, and vegetables. It definitely wasn't what we were used to, but it was a lot cleaner and healthier than what we usually eat. The food there was very, a lot smaller portion-wise, but very filling. One night with my host family, we made like takoyaki, which is, we called it octoballs, which is like pancake mix in the form of a ball and an octopus in the middle. And then obviously, what Ms. Sarah said, the squid, the raw squid, was probably one of the craziest things I ate there. We also got to experience, my host family took me to, we went to pick strawberries, and it was a lot different over there. You did it inside, and they were eye-level. They were a lot sweeter, they had all different kinds, probably because they don't use any of the pesticides we use, but it was an amazing thing to see, and again, thank you so much for this opportunity.
I'm a rising senior at Dublin High School, and today I will be telling you about what we have in common with our Japanese friends. When it comes to my Japanese friends and I, we had quite a few things in common. We all shared a strong sense of dedication and hard work, whether it's in our studies, sports, or other hobbies. For example, my friend Rico was dedicated to practicing archery and calligraphy. My host family all were in the medical field. My host sister Mickey was a neurosurgeon, which interested, interested me a lot because I thought that career choice was amazing, and I watch a lot of Grey's Anatomy, so I had many questions. As Americans, we also had a love for Japanese culture as well, including anime, food, and traditional customs. We enjoyed exploring different Japanese cuisines from sushi to ramen. Watching anime is another favorite pastime, and we love discussing our favorite shows and characters. We also enjoyed the American-style food. We tried the McDonald's in Japan, and I let them try American food I enjoyed back home. Additionally, we showed an appreciation for, sorry, we showed an appreciation for traditional Japanese customs, participating in cultural events, and learning about the history behind them has brought us closer and deepened our understanding of each other's background, while also sharing things about life in America. Our shared interests and values really helped us build a strong and supportive friendship. Whether we're practicing, teaching each other's language, playing sports, dancing, or just hanging out, we also found common ground and enjoyed each other's company. All in all, we had lots in common and lots to teach and learn from each other. I'm so thankful, thankful for all the knowledge I have gained from this amazing experiments, experience. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
I'm Paris White. I have graduated from Dublin High School, and I am an upcoming senior, upcoming freshman. I'm ready to get out of the way, y'all. An upcoming freshman at Savannah College of Art and Design. I'm here to talk about my experience at Osaka Miyagi. And first of all, I like to say that I am grateful that we did get to experience such a rural area where we could use our Japanese language and actually learn more about their culture, whereas in Tokyo, it was still more catered to our English, English language and American aspects. And as Ms. Sarah Colby said, the 2011 earthquake and tsunami, we visited the museum, and we actually got to see some of the impact that it had on their city, such as they placed a car inside a museum, and the car was completely crushed by the impact of the tsunami and the earthquake. And we also learned about the solidarity between Americans, as Ralph Lauren also hosted towels, and they also gave them lots of support during that hard time. And we also visited YKK AP, the Tohoku Plant, and that also showed our relationship between Dublin and Osaka, and also, they also emphasized their morals as family and working together as well. And the Matsushimi, Matsushimi Bay, Ponchi Islands, and they're known for their rich beauty and history, and we did have the honor to actually see the islands, and that was actually a part of the royalty where they used to claim those islands as well. And one of my favorite parts was going to Naruku Kokeshi Doll Museum and also creating our own Kokeshi dolls, which I still have, and we also use those as souvenirs as well. And one of the things I would like to mention is their agriculture and how their rice is a big part in their culture as well and that area. And my host mother, Megan Misson, cooked the best rice. And I believe that's why food and music, especially when talking about different cultures, can really bring us together. And I'd just like to say thank you so much for the International Committee and Dublin's, the city council for letting us go on this trip. Thank you.
How y'all doing?
Great.
Hello? Uh, my name is Derek McCray. Uh, I'm going, I just graduated from Dublin High School. I'll be going to, I'll be a freshman at Georgia Southern in the fall. Thank you for allowing me to go on this trip. Thank you for helping me get there. That was amazing experience. I loved every moment of it. I'm here to talk about the natural beauty of, of everything. I loved every moment in Japan. As soon as I hopped off that plane, I saw, I was actually, I was, I was taking pictures from the sky, because I was like, just looking like how they was, um, how the houses were built, and how when you go, start from the country and then go to the city, they get more tight and condensed. I thought everything was amazing. I, I saw how much care that the Japanese people took care of their, they took care of everything, even from bathrooms to walkways to everything. You didn't start seeing trash until you went to Tokyo. It was, it was all them foreigners, they was just, they was making everything dirty. But even like the plants, the trees, everything, even hanami sites, like the sakura blossoms, that's called a hanami site, and those were just amazing. Uh, I can't, like the shrines, we went to a beautiful shrine, I forgot where it was, don't ask me. It was beautiful, though. They had like literal wood carvings of like elaborate and very detailed, beautiful designs carved out of wood and like encased in gold. Everything in the whole entire shrine was encased in gold, like, that's big money. And it was just, but you just got to every, everywhere you went, you saw that they took care of everything. Everything, even, even the sunrise, even the sunset, and that was so aesthetic, that was beautiful. And there wasn't trash everywhere. Even their cars, they were clean, they weren't dirty. They took care of everything, everything they took time and cared about, and I loved every moment of it. And y'all should go to Japan, too.
Exactly.
Uh, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
I think I'm gonna move there.
Thank you again to all of our students. I just want to say the main thing that I, I got, the one word was honor. We felt very honored for the privilege of being able to go, but we felt very honored by our hosts as well. And so I just want to encourage you, if you want to be a host family, we will be hosting again in 2026. So look for information coming about that, or you can speak to me later. And then we will travel again in 2027, and the school counselors will have applications in hand the fall of 2026, so be looking out for those. Thank you.
Right. Also, I want to thank the volunteers on the International Committee. Do we have any of the volunteers for the International Committee here? Thank you for coming this evening, but also thank you for your service over the last year and a half in preparing for this trip. And also, Councilman Colby, thank you for all your hard work in, in organizing this. This will complete this cycle of the International Committee, and then in January, we'll start it back up again and, and get ready for the next exchange trip. Thank you very much.
Shudo?
Shudo? Thank you very much, Shudo, for coming, and I don't know if the community real, and your guests as well, thank you for coming this evening. I don't know if everyone knows the impact of YKK owned Dublin, but they are one of our largest employers and our largest taxpayer. They are also one of our largest utility users, and over the last 30 years, the, the exchange program has really enriched our community, not just financially, but culturally as well. So I really appreciate YKK's participation in this program and your investment and enrichment of our community. Look forward to continuing this program for many years to come. Thank you very much for that, and we will now move to our final special presentation of the evening, the City of Dublin Youth Program, Administration of, of the Oath to our new youth council members.
All right, so our municipal court judge, Judge Lauren Kirkland, is going to come down to administer the oath. So students, as I, as I call your name, if you will come up front and line up here, and she'll administer the oath to you en masse. Some of our, our students are not here, they were on either vacations or other trips, and were not able to be here, but I'm going to announce them anyway. Gage Ganto is going to be Mayor Pro Tem, a senior at Trinity Christian School. Ariana Lloyd, a member-at-large, a sophomore at West Lawrence High School. Beyonce Edmund, city planner, a junior at Dublin High School. Zomani Williams, again, come on forward when I call your name. Zomani Williams is not here, as I understand it, council member-at-large, a senior at East Lawrence High School. Olivia Selman is not here, but is a council member-at-large, a junior at Trinity Christian School. Morgan Moore is not here, city clerk, junior at Dublin High School. Maria Thomas, city manager, very important position. And from the looks of things, I think you have 30 council members almost to deal with. It's like being in Japan. Senior at Dublin High School. Brooklyn Ziegler, at-large member of the council, senior at East Lawrence High School. Emma McDaniel, council historian, a junior at Dublin High School. Brooke Harbor, council historian, senior, West Lawrence High School. Krista Patel, Ward Four, senior, West Lawrence High School. Dustin Clements, mayor, senior, West Lawrence High School. Priscilla Allen, at-large member, senior, East Lawrence High School. Kalen Hubbard, Ward Two, senior, East Lawrence High School. Asa Avery, at-large member, freshman, Trinity Christian School. Ella Selman is not here, but will be an at-large member, freshman at Trinity Christian School. Zalen Boston, Ward One, senior, Dublin High School. Darcy Spires, an at-large member, freshman, Trinity Christian School. Catherine Bryan, Ward Three, senior, West Lawrence High School. Nolan Terry, at-large, junior, Trinity Christian School. Caitlin Bryan, at-large, senior, West Lawrence High School. CJ Stubbs, at-large member, sophomore, Dublin High School. Lillian Davis, at-large, sophomore, East Lawrence High School. And Adrian Beecham, the assistant city clerk, junior at East Lawrence High School.
That's so awesome.
Yep, we're going to have to squeeze in tight, guys.
Judge Kirkland, I want to thank you for coming this evening to administer the oath.
It's an honor, and they're welcome to come to City Core anytime. We're all great. So time to say what we do. The, the future mayor here is with us on The future mayor here is with his almost second session. So, we'd love to have y'all. Congratulations on being selected. What I'm gonna do, I'm gonna read the oath. There will be a point where you say your name. I want you to state your name, not your, not state your name. And at the end, uh, you'll say, "I do," if you take the oath. So if you'll raise your right hands, aye, state your name.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear that I will support, uphold, and defend the Constitution and the laws of the United States of America and the state of Georgia, that I will obey the laws and ordinances of the City of Dublin, Georgia, and the bylaws and rules of the City of Dublin Youth Council, and will faithfully perform and discharge the duties incumbent upon me as a member of the youth council fairly, honestly, into the best of my skill and ability, and as to me shall seem to be for the best interest and welfare of the city without fear, favor, or affection. So help me God, you'll say, "I do."
Aye.
Congratulations.
All right. Um, you know, isn't it great to see all the young people here this evening in these different capacities? And I just think it's so important at a young age to get involved with your local government and with your community. And I'm very proud that this city and this council are providing these kind of opportunities for all of you guys to get to know how your city works, how your government works, and to learn more about your community. And hopefully, that's gonna get you tied even tighter to this place, to Dublin, so that whenever you decide to come back home from, from college or from whatever experience you have, that you'll come back home to Dublin and be able to contribute back to this community. So congratulations to all of you. Look forward to your participation over this next year. This concludes our special presentations for the evening. So if any of you are here just for the special presentations or you need to step out at this time, this would be a time when you can step out. But we do want to invite everyone to stay for our regular agenda items, uh, which include purchases and annexations and spending money. Uh, so you're welcome to, to stay for the entirety of the meeting, but if you would like to step out now, this would be a time you can do that.
City staff, y'all can just stay seated.
Please don't go.
You done?
All right. So we are going to, uh, as, as you're making your way out, we're gonna begin our regular agenda items. So we will begin with item number one on the agenda, which is approval of the May 16th City Council Meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the minutes. Do we have a second? We have a second from Councilman Griggs. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll now move to item number two of the agenda, which is approval of bills over $15,000. Uh, Mr. Powell, do you have any comments on the bills over $15,000?
The council has all those in their packet.
Uh, any questions regarding those bills?
Make a motion to pay the bills.
We have a motion from Councilman Smith, a second from Councilman Jones. All those in favor of this item number two, bills over $15,000, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll now move to item number three, which is approval of purchases over $15,000. Mr. Powell.
Uh, we have one purchase for tonight. It's some GAB, graded aggregate base, needed to complete the Geronan Drive, uh, paving project. This is currently a dirt road in town. Uh, we're wanting to get it paved. Um, it's actually, it breaks down to two vendors. Um, there's the materials from Vulcan, um, and also the hauling of those materials by Hazel Trucking, uh, for a grand total purchase of $37,250. And staff recommends that you approve that purchase.
All right. Uh, Geronan Drive, this is the road that's next to the VA. Is that right? The?
No, that was Russell Drive and we've done that. This is, um, of Kellam Road.
Kellam Road, okay. Uh, any questions for staff regarding this item?
Yeah, I just want to thank staff for getting it done. This was a road that, uh, as soon as I stepped foot as a councilman, I got notified about this road four or five years ago, so I appreciate that.
Glad to get it done.
Appreciate the city staff and everybody finally getting it done.
All right. So would you like to make the motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All right. We have a motion from Councilman Smith to approve the purchase. We have a second from Councilman Jones. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll now have a second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to annex half an acre of land, um, from CV Properties of Dublin LLC. Mr. Powell.
This is ordinance 2402, annexing and incorporating into the municipality of the City of Dublin, Georgia, 0.5 acres, more or less, of land located at parcel D04E015 as P Professional Zone, the proposed use is for a medical office. Uh, this is, uh, a property adjacent to the existing business there on, um, on Fairview Park Drive. It's right behind 105 Fairview Park Drive. And it's so they can expand their office space. Uh, staff recommends that this be approved by the council.
All right. So we had our first reading of this ordinance at our last, uh, city council meeting. Uh, at this time, we'll have a public hearing on the proposed annexation. I will close our regular council meeting. And I am now opening a public hearing regarding the ordinance to annex half an acre of land. Is there anyone who would like to speak for or against this annexation? Now is your opportunity. Is there anyone who would like to speak for or against the annexation? I know that we do have a representative from the property owner that's here answering questions, but I didn't hear any questions at pre-council. If no one is needing to, uh, speak on this, then we will close the public hearing. The public hearing is now closed. We'll turn this matter over to council for action. We have a motion.
So moved.
All right. So we have a motion from Councilman Brown and a second from Councilman Jones to approve the annexation. Uh, any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Roll call.
Oh, this is a roll call. I'm sorry. Thank you guys for correcting me there. This is a roll call vote because it is an ordinance. So Madam Clerk, Ms. Browning, if you will call the roll.
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Councilwoman Godfrey.
Yes.
Councilwoman Colby.
Yes.
Councilman Griggs.
Yes.
Councilwoman Snea.
Yes.
Councilman Mascara.
Yes.
All right. Thank you for that. The ordinance passes. We'll now move to item number five on the agenda. Item number five is a second reading and public hearing on an ordinance to adopt our fiscal year 2025 operating budget. Mr. Powell.
This is ordinance number 2403, an ordinance by the mayor and council of the City of Dublin to provide for the adoption of the fiscal year 2025 operating budget for the City of Dublin to, uh, to update the position and classification schedule for employees of the city to set criteria for the city's retention incentive, to adopt a five-year capital improvement plan, for the city to set an effective date, and for other lawful purposes. Um, the total budget this year, on both the expense and revenue side, is $95,364,169.
Okay. Uh, at this time, we have had the second reading and we will now close the city council meeting and open a public hearing to receive any comments regarding this proposed budget for fiscal year 2025. Is there anyone who would like to come forward and make any comments or ask any questions regarding our 2025 fiscal year budget? If there's no one that likes to speak in favor of or against the ordinance, then we will close this public hearing and turn this matter back over to council for action. We have a motion.
Move for approval of second budget.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Brown and a second from Councilman Griggs. Any discussion on the motion? All right. I know that we have, uh, had extensive budget hearings, budget workshops. We've had a first reading, a second reading, so I feel like we've been over this all. Does anybody have any questions or public comments? Um, if not, then we will move to a roll call. Uh, Ms. Browning, would you please call the roll?
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Councilwoman Godfrey.
Yes.
Councilwoman Colby.
Yes.
Councilman Griggs.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Mascara.
Yes.
Ordinance passes.
All right. I want to thank, uh, staff and council members, uh, including, I know Mr. Daniels and Mr. Powell worked very hard for a long time with the department heads, putting this budget together. It's the largest buddy, budget in the city's history, but at the same time, we've managed to keep the taxes at the low level that they're at. Uh, I think this is driven a lot by our grants and being very aggressive about getting grants. And I'm very proud of the budget that you guys have put together and that council has passed here. I think we're gonna be able to accomplish a lot in this next year. All right. We'll now move to item number six, which is the second reading and public hearing on an ordinance to amend our utilities code of ordinance section. Mr. Powell.
This is ordinance 2404, uh, for amending rates that will be effective on July 10th, 2024, and ordinance amending section 24-38, 24-39, and 2472 of chapter 24 entitled Utilities Code Of Ordinances, City of Dublin, Georgia. And it also sets the effective date. Uh, this will, um, raise, um, water and corresponding sewer rates by 20 cents per thousand gallons.
All right. And as I noted at our last meeting, this is a, uh, a minimal increase. Uh, a minimum, a minimum bill would go from $24 to $24.80. Uh, do we have any questions for staff regarding this ordinance? If not, do we have a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
We have a motion from Councilman Griggs.
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Smith. Any discussion on the motion? If not, Ms. Browning, will we please, will you please call the roll?
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Councilwoman Godfrey.
Yes.
Councilwoman Colby.
Yes.
Councilman Griggs.
Yes.
Councilman Snea.
Yes.
Councilman Mascara.
Yes.
Ordinance passes.
All right. I, I believe I made an error there. Uh, were we supposed to have a public hearing prior to?
Oh, sorry. I thought you did.
Okay. Um, so at this time, uh, if we can just reverse and go back. And, um, I just want to, yeah, I just want, I just want to make sure that, uh, that we have this correct for our records, uh, in case somebody challenges the utility, the 80 cents in the future. Um, at this time, we're gonna go back and close the city council meeting and open, uh, an opportunity for a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to this proposed ordinance? All right. Hearing none, I will close the public meeting and reopen the city council meeting and ask the clerk to call the roll again, please.
Sure. Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Councilwoman Godfrey.
Yes.
Councilwoman Colby.
Yes.
Councilman Griggs.
Yes.
Councilman Snea.
Yes.
Councilman Mascara.
Yes.
All right. I apologize again for that. And, um, you guys have got to keep me straight. I've missed a couple tonight. So let's move to item number seven, which is discussion and action on a resolution to approve an agreement with the Department of Corrections. Mr. Powell.
This is Resolution 2423, a resolution of the City of Dublin, Georgia, by and through its mayor and council, approving a contract with the Georgia Department of Corrections for the services of a work detail for the City of Dublin to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the same, set an effective date, and for other lawful purposes. Um, for those that don't know, we utilize a prison work detail at Riverview Golf Course and have for a number of years now. And, um, the contract here, um, has not changed, uh, for the last several years. The total cost is $24,659 for this on an annual basis, uh, which is essentially for the time of the, um, corrections officer that comes and supervises the workers. Uh, staff recommends that you approve the resolution.
Okay. This is a resolution, so it does not require a public hearing or a roll call vote, but do we have any questions for staff regarding it? If there are no questions, do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Mascara, a second from Councilman Brown. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll now move to item number eight on the agenda, which is a first reading of an ordinance to re-adopt the GMEB's defined benefit retirement plan. Mr. Powell.
This is ordinance number 2405 to re-adopt the Georgia Municipal Employee Benefit System or GMEB's defined benefit retirement plan. This is, uh, something that GMA and the GMEB's program is required to get IRS, um, approval each year of the plan to maintain the tax, uh, benefits that we receive from that. Um, so, um, each municipality that's a part of the GMEB's program is required to, um, re-adopt the plan after that approval has been received by the IRS. And so that's what this ordinance will do. This is just a first reading.
All right. And I think it's important to note that, uh, the benefits will remain same, remain the same. There's no change to the benefits. This is just a particular thing. This was a first reading. A second reading and a public hearing on this matter will be held at the June 20th city council meeting. We'll now move to item number nine on the agenda, which is a resolution to approve a promissory note and loan agreement with Jifa for our industrial sewer project. Mr. Powell.
This is Resolution 2424. Um, a resolution by the mayor and council of the City of Dublin to approve and accept the terms of a loan agreement and promissory note with the Clean Water State Revolving Fund administered by the Georgia Environmental Finance Authority, sometimes referred to as Jifa, uh, to set an effective date and for other lawful purposes. Uh, this, after we, after the council awarded the bid for the work to be done for the sewer project, which has already started, um, back in December, um, we went back to Jifa because we knew we were gonna need additional funds to complete it. Um, the total project cost is just over $8 million now. Um, and we had, um, all of that but $600,000 in both accommodation of a previous Jifa loan and an EDA grant. Um, so this is a separate loan for the additional $600,000 needed to, um, complete the project. It is a 20-year term. It has a 1.9, uh, excuse me, 1.8% interest rate. Um, and so staff is recommending that you approve the, um, the loan or the resolution.
Okay. So we have this, uh, resolution to approve the loan agreement and the promissory note. Do we have any questions for staff regarding it? And this, this is that, go ahead.
This is the, uh, the sewer project is gonna help the industrial washing?
It, it's the one that runs, um, all the way from Brown Road up to, um, yes, the 257 industrial site.
Okay.
And I think it also serves YKK too, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah. So, um, yeah, this is our primary industrial sewer, uh, sewer line. It's, uh, expensive, but the good news is that we've got very good loan terms. Um, so that from the total cost of the project, um, most of it is at 0% interest. Some of the money's gonna be forgiven by, uh, the state, uh, funding agency. And we received over $2.6 million in grants. So, um, are there any questions for council of staff?
That was what I was gonna say. Just clarify what the, the total project is over 8 million bucks and where the, where the funding's coming from. And we're very fortunate that the 600,000 is at 1.8% and not the over $4 million is at 1.8%.
That's right. We've got, the other loan is, um, 4.8, over 4.8 million dollars, but this is 0% interest for those 20 years. The principal payment, um, with interest is gonna be just over $260,000, um, a year.
Any other comments or questions? If not, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Brown and a second from Councilman Griggs to approve the promissory note and loan agreement. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll now move to item number 10, which is a resolution to award a contract for the Hillburn Park pickleball construction project. Mr. Powell.
This is Resolution 2425, a resolution by the mayor and council of the City of Dublin to approve the award of a contract for the construction of the Hillburn Park pickleball courts to authorize the mayor to execute and deliver an agreement for said services, provide for an effective date, and for other lawful purposes. We did receive two proposals for this work. Um, and staff is recommending that you, uh, award this to Signature Tennis Courts out of Woodstock, Georgia, uh, for the total of $149,000. Um, so whoever makes the motion to approve the resolution, if you could, uh, specify to do it as recommended by staff.
Okay. Um, and this, as we discussed it at pre-council, the bids, uh, were evaluated by the bid evaluation committee and scored. And the signature tennis quote was higher than the match point tennis quote, but Signature Tennis scored significantly higher in the overall bid package review. Um, are there any questions or comments?
Overall, initial overall budget for this was $260,000 if I'm correct. So we're well under what we originally budgeted for this.
That's right. And I, well, I should point out in fairness that that budget figure came about when we were, um, looking at still doing eight courts there. But after evaluating that, um, and looking at having to move the existing lighting that's there to accommodate that, it was, um, decided to continue on with replacing it. Just having six courts, yes. So in fairness, the budget amount, but yes, we have plenty of money to cover the, either one of these, um, that you approve.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Please let the, um, audience know that we won't close the pickleball courts until the other project is completed.
Yeah. I think that is important to know. Um, last council meeting, uh, council approved a partnership with Middle Georgia State University to resurface the courts at the Dublin campus. Um, my understanding is that should happen over the next couple of months.
To convert the tennis.
To convert the tennis courts to six pickleball courts. So the Hillburn courts are gonna have to be totally torn out and, and redone. So the Hillburn courts are going to have to be totally torn out and redone, and they'll be out of service for up to eight weeks. Because of that, we don't want to start this project until the Middle Georgia State University courts are resurfaced and ready to go. So we will have continuity of court availability. We won't start this project until the other courts are ready.
You know when they're going to start the other project?
They haven't given us a definite date, time. I know they have secured the vendor to do that work for them, but they haven't given us a timeline.
When you say that, you want to talk about eight weeks of completing this project. If they are stretching theirs out, you might want to go and do this project. And so they, I mean, I understand they're going to be a pickleball court, but they, we do have them at Southern Pine. Depending on when they're going to start on theirs at Middle Georgia, it may be feasible to go and do this one. I think it's going to take eight weeks.
The, as I understand it, the conversion process, and staff, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's a lot, a lot faster process than what we're having to do here with the total new construction. So it may be that they, hopefully we'll get a timeline from them. That's within the next few weeks, so.
Yeah, the contractor, if I recall correctly, said it's usually one week, anywhere from five to fifteen days to do the conversion.
Don't take long to do it. We got that or dead or double. I'm saying if they're not going to do that to October.
Right.
We need to go and get this done and then.
Oh, yeah, no, I believe it's going to happen sooner than that.
All right, so do we have any other questions or comments? If not, all those in, do we need a motion?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve Signature Tennis's quote for the total re-haul of the park courts.
All right, we have a motion to award the bid to Signature Tennis.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. I know that former Mayor Drigger would be very pleased with the council for approving this. All right, let's move to item number eleven, which is discussion and action on a resolution to amend the contract for construction of the Northside Fire Station. Mr. Powell.
This is resolution twenty-four twenty-six, a resolution by the mayor and council of the City of Dublin to approve an amendment to the contract with Garbit Construction Company to establish a guaranteed maximum price for the Northside Fire Station project to authorize the mayor to execute and deliver the same, to provide authority for further amendments to the contract, to provide for an effective date, and for other lawful purposes. After working very closely with both our architect GMC and Garbit Construction and going through some value engineering that we were able to experience on the Northside Fire Station design, the total GMP is two million, eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars and forty-six cents. This, along with the preliminary costs that we've incurred, as well as our architect's fee, is, brings the total project cost to just over three million dollars. We have, as was announced over a year ago now, Senator, through Senator Ossoff's office, we were able to secure one point eight two million dollars in the form of a direct allocation from the federal budget. We are getting that money or applying for that money through the USDA and providing all the paperwork needed, just very much like a grant process. And that will be supplemented with the two thousand and eighteen splot to make up the total cost of the project. And staff recommends that you approve the resolution, which will both adopt the amendment to the contract with Garbit to set the GMP. I think that it's, it's important, too, to note that if the cost of the project comes in more than this amount, that that will fall to Garbit to cover those costs. If the project ends up costing less, if we do any further value engineering, or if these costs, as they actually are incurred, are less, then we will experience the benefit of that on our end. So I'm looking forward to getting this project done. As you can see in the audience, we have a number of people here from the fire department. They have fire hoses ready if you try to deny this. They will very much, so you can see the interest in making sure that our community has the fire protection it needs, and I think it's a great investment of this council going forward. So thank you.
All right, appreciate that explanation. You know, another thing that I think is important is that according to the representative from Garbit at our pre-council meeting, once this is approved, they would anticipate starting work on the fire station by the first week of August, end of July, first week of August. And I know we've been talking about this fire station for a long time. We were, we were hoping to start work on it about a year and a half ago, but then we had the grant opportunity. And I think that it was, it was just a, it was totally appropriate for this council to pause to try to get the grant. And because we did that, it did delay things by about eighteen months, but we got one point eight million dollars, over one point eight million dollars in federal funds to help with the cost of this project. So it was one of those, those times where we were all frustrated because it took a little bit longer than we thought, but it was the right thing to do for our, for our citizens and our taxpayers. So with that one point eight two million from the federal government, you know, that's going to really allow us to build a great fire station out, out there on the north side. In addition, we've also spent, how much on the south, on the, on the Shamrock Fire Station so far?
Total has been up to, it's over six hundred, I think it's approaching seven hundred thousand.
Yeah, and then we have money in our splot funds for renovations to the Southside Fire Station, too. So this council is putting a lot of funds into public safety and improving the facilities that you guys work with. So do we have a motion at this time?
I just want to share one thing.
Yeah, please.
To let the firefighters know that we are not finished with the Southside Fire Station. We will circle back and do some more upgrades to the Southside Fire Station.
Yep.
I don't know the date, but we'll come back around.
Yeah, it was included in this upcoming splot, so it'll be budgeted as part of that.
I think they need to know that the delay of this was not due to the federal, the grant. Again, the grant was already granted. We was waiting on the state to give us our certificate so we can get this from federal money. Federal money been sitting there for two years. We've been waiting on the state agriculture to clear up and do their process to give us our certificate. So it's not on the federal government. It was on the state.
It's USDA, so that's federal, not just federal. That's who the money's coming through.
Yeah, the money come through there, but we was waiting on the state to give us the clarification to clear. We waiting on them to clear up the land. They had to do inspection with them, I do from what I understood.
Oh, no, it's been, as far as the funding goes, it's been USDA.
USDA been waiting to give us the money. They just been waiting on us to apply.
I have a question with the chief. May I ask him about staffing? Since we getting a third fire station, will you have to staff or recruit any more firefighters? Or do we have enough right now to?
We're going to start out with staffing and what we have.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Do we have any other questions for staff at this time? If not, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Mascara, the second from, I'm sorry, from Councilman Jones. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right, we'll now move to.
I didn't clap. I thought y'all was waiting on us.
Long awaited, the long awaited Northside Fire Station. All right, we'll now move to item number twelve on the agenda, which is adoption of the Lawrence County Emergency Operations Plan. Mr. Powell.
Lawrence County and all of the municipalities that provide emergency services are required to adopt the Lawrence County Emergency Operations Plan each year, and so that would include the City of Dublin. This has to be updated every four years, and our EMA director, Bill Laird, has been working on this. And our two fire, or excuse me, our fire chief and police chief have been involved in this process as well and familiar with this plan. But it basically outlines the process and procedures for, in the state of an emergency in our community and kind of the roles of the various departments that are involved in providing emergency services. The, the primary changes to this plan for this year from the twenty twenty plan that was adopted by the council are the contacts involved, because you know, we've had some changes in staffing here, as well as updated statistical and demographic information. So very minimal changes for this year's plan, and it does require council to adopt so that the mayor can sign on behalf of the city. So we ask that you approve the plan.
Any questions regarding the emergency operations plan? All right, if we don't have any questions, do we have a motion?
Move for adoption of the plan.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion from Councilman Brown and a second from Councilman Colby to adopt the Lawrence County Emergency Operations Plan. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right, we'll now move to the final item on the agenda, which is discussion and action on a declaration of surplus. Mr. Powell.
We have a number of items there. Most, the bulk of them are from City Hall that are ripe for sale. We have no further use for with the city, and we ask that council declare them surplus so we can auction them off.
Okay, council has the list of items, and we're looking at the visuals of those items. Any questions regarding any of these surplus items? All right, if not, do we have a motion?
Make a motion for.
Second.
So we have a motion to declare these items surplus from Councilman Griggs with a second from Councilman Smith. Any questions regarding them, or any comments on the motion? If there's no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right, at this time, we will open the floor for citizens' comments. Any citizen that would like to make a comment this evening, please come forward, state your name. Our city clerk, Heather Browning, will set the timer for three minutes, and we welcome your comments.
Good evening.
Good to see you.
Good evening. I hope my minutes don't start yet. You two have to see us. It's been a while. Girl wants to have a beer. Thank you. You gentlemen. This upper respiratory is keeping me away from you guys for about five months. This might work from three to five minutes. I tried to make you quick. Hello, everybody. And please make your, it's some typos in here.
Oh, okay.
I did it at three o'clock this morning. I am a citizen of Dublin. First of all, I am Jafro and Jadon Bright. I am also a United States veteran. Today's D-Day, so I'm D-Daying here in Dublin. Thank you.
I, a citizen of Dublin, live at six oh three Hudson Drive. I'm very disappointed in the elected officials and citizens of Dublin who have the bargaining power to implement healthy and safe environments for all of us to live in. For an example, a lot of time, money, and effort have been placed in the implementation of Unit Two Point, but it sits idle with uncut grass, unworking fountains, and no landscaping as far as flowers and beautification. I was told sixteen months ago that G-Dot is responsible for a crosswalk on Highway three nineteen at an intersection near Hudson Street, which is at Paul's Fracture. Tourists are encouraged to come to Dublin, and if they look behind the scenes in the cross railroad tracks and bridges, will find dilapidated buildings and warehouses once occupied by companies such as Elderwater Stone, Flex Steel, and others who once employed many of the citizens of Dublin and surrounding counties. The Downtown Development Authority is looking for ways to bring people here, but do they remember that Dublin is multicultural and not only the black and white, but Mexicans, Palestinians, Irish, Jews, and other nationalities? Vape stores, convenience stores, car washes, and oil change companies are on the rise, but yet there are no sporting stores such as Dick's or Hibbs' Sports. The food venues are pitiful, perhaps a Panda Express, the Barbers, Olive Garden. Who does maybe, there's a real, a real to war between Carey, Premier, Excel, Central Twenty-One, and the private landowners who are privileged to get the first, the list that the land bank provides to them, whereas we as citizens are not privileged to buy in blocks and exploit those with high rents and no maintenance agreements. The council agenda often starts with an approval bill. Bills that allow our elected officials to go out, go to out-of-town meetings that taxpayers expense, but those of us with fixed incomes struggle to pay taxes outlined to go to the school or the city, and then expect an increase of four cents to water or two cents to sewer or a price hike in electricity will not affect the senior citizens or the families of four who have to decide whether to buy milk or gas to get to work. Now, I'm satisfied and very disappointed with the Dublin now and what is proposed for the Dublin of our future. Why? People have no vision. I'm here tonight to appeal to the city council and those citizens that are listening at home or who will watch this viewing later to either stand for something or die for nothing. Do not waste my time and taxpayer money on gates to keep her out of the neighborhood because your community does not want to be bothered with the world outside. And last but not least, global warnings here as anyone in the council considers.
Miss. Thank you for your comments, Ms. Wright.
Thank you very much.
Is, is there anyone else who would like to make a comment this evening? Thank you.
How are y'all?
Hello.
My name is Denise Creel, and I am the new executive director for Hutter, Georgia, in Anadwe. We wanted to let you know that we are getting it back up and running and up and running like it should be running. We are having a meet and greet June the twenty-first, and I've got an invitation for everyone, and we'd like for you to come and see us. We're still looking for an office. The building on Gaines Street was sold, but we are still looking for an office at this point. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll be glad to take those cards. Any other citizens' comments this evening? Anyone else? All right, at this time, we will close citizens' comments. Thank you, Ms. Creel, for coming. And we will have comments by council and staff. Mr. Daniels, any comments this evening? Thank you. Mr. Groover?
No, ma'am.
City clerk, Ms. Browning. All right, great, thank you. We'll start with Mr. Brown, Councilman Brown.
No comments tonight.
All right, Councilman Jones.
Thank you, ma'am. We'd like to congratulate Employee of the Year, Ms. Moon, for her award. Also, say thank you to our International Committee for what they did going to Osaka, Japan, and representing the city very well. And I see the Dublin U Council, we look forward to working with them. This year, they actually had thirty-one students apply to be on U Council, which is the largest that we ever had to apply for that position. You see the number out thirty-one that we had, so we look forward to working with the youth and getting them involved in the community. Also, we had to cancel our little event the other Saturday because of the weather. But this Saturday, we'll be doing pop-up librarian, starting out, kicking off, having the library kick off their summer reading program at the Captain W. Gray Resource Center. We had the police and fire department be there cooking hot dogs, and we'd be giving out bags, hoping to get the children involved in summer reading programs through the library. So council and community, you're welcome to come by, be from ten to twelve, come out and enjoy that and get involved. Thank you.
All right.
Also, we have our Juneteenth parade next Saturday. I'm sorry, Juneteenth parade next Saturday, starting at twelve. And also, the activity is on the market on Madison, so you come out and have a good time.
All right, thank you for those comments, Councilman Jones. Councilman Godfrey.
No comment, thank you, sir.
All right, Councilman Colby.
No comments.
Councilman Griggs?
No comment, please.
Councilman Smith?
Just to echo what Benny said, congratulations to Mr. Moon, Employee of the Year, and thank you for your citizens' comments as well. I just want to leave a special thanks to Sarah, who did an amazing job with the youth in the trip to Japan. And it looks like, well, it seems like everyone enjoyed themselves, so a big kudos to you on the International Committee. And thank everyone for coming.
All right, thank you for those comments. Councilman Mascara.
I just have a question. Sarah, was the green jacket that Mr. Ito worn given to him by the City of Dublin?
I'm not sure, but he, he had it long before my time. And he, he wore it every single day or his Shamrock tie. Yes.
Thank y'all for coming.
Then that jacket was given to him early, as, early by early Canadian council.
Now, did, and the mayor, Ito, wore the green in representation of our relationship?
Yes, but their colors are also gray and white.
Okay, cool.
They're city colors.
All right, all right, thank you. Mr. Powell, any comments this evening?
Just want to thank the council for approving this upcoming year's budget. Want to thank Mr. Daniels for his hard work in making sure all that, all the numbers were as they should be, and all the department heads and staff for your work to help put that budget together. So it's a big, big, big thing we just accomplished there. Thank you.
All right, if, yes.
You can figure out, make a motion to go to executive session.
Yep, that's, at this time, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
All right, so my understanding from this.
Real estate, real estate and litigation.
Okay, yeah, we have to specify, yeah. So we have a motion to go into executive session for real estate and litigation. We have a second on that motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the ayes have it. I want to thank everyone for coming this evening. Appreciate everyone's comments and participation. We'll now adjourn to the, actually, we'll stay in here for our executive session.
I've asked some staff to stay, too. Who made the second?